All right, I'd like to go ahead and reconvene the meeting of the Pedelema City Schools Board of Education. We just came back out from closed session. We're gonna go ahead and start off with a pledge of allegiance. You all right?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of American America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna go if that was the best pledge of allegiance we've had so far.
I think so.
It's nice to have everybody here. I wanna go ahead and also just start off by publicly thanking coworkers that I have a work for sharing a beautiful cold with me. So if you can't hear me, please do go ahead and raise your hand or something. Keep it as loud as I can as we go through. We're gonna start off with a public hearing. And the public hearing, which we open by doing this, is for the Pedelema Federation of Teachers' Contract Reopeners. Public hearing only conducted regarding the contract reopeners for the 2013-2014 school year received from the Pedelema Federation of Teachers. That will be the union that represents the certificated employees of Pedelema City Schools and Pedelema City School District. So do I have anybody that would like to speak to this item? Okay, all right. Do you have, is there more than one or two of you, or is there, do you have, we try to keep it orderly if we can, so if you have a plan, please share. So if you'll do me a favor, anybody that's presenting to the board, you need to, for the record, state your name and address. So if you all want to do that to begin with, that might be the most appropriate.
Can we quickly introduce ourselves? To the first part, all the people on the left here, that I'm saying.
Here's Cynthia K-1 teacher from Mary Collins School.
This is Lois K-1 teacher from Mary Collins.
Suzanne Gray kindergarten, McNear Elementary.
Mary Beth Cohen K-1 teacher from McNear.
Jeanette RC kindergarten from Williams.
Carrie Cottle kindergarten and first grade teacher from Mary Collins School.
Kim Hertzberg kindergarten and first grade teacher from Mary Collins School.
And Freya Sharp I teach kindergarten at.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Will you be speaking?
Yes, per the first part, we're all taking turns.
Okay, so as you speak, your floor ahead.
Sure, I'm at Freya Sharp, I'm at 816 Adams.
Thank you very much.
So as we said, we, we're here to represent kindergarten teachers at the school sites. It recently came to our attention that the district was planning on implementing a full day kindergarten program at all the school sites for the upcoming school year. Over the past few weeks, kindergarten teachers representing all the school sites have been meeting to discuss this plan. We're here tonight representing that cohesive group of colleagues to voice our concern over the process that the district has taken in planning for this full day kindergarten. And we also want to inform you of the impact that a rushed decision would have on our current programs and the children that we see in our classrooms.
Great, so we're gonna keep this as short as we can. Go ahead. We wanted to start by just letting you know all the ways that we think the district is just really doing a great job and all the things that we're doing that really makes our district a leader, we think, in the, in the surrounding area. And one of those things is the shared decision-making process that we have. That's something that we pride ourselves on and that we use those protocols in making decisions. We have to within the Common Core standards, all of our advanced work on getting ready to adopt the Common Core and do that effectively in our classrooms. Our teacher evaluation process, which I know we're gonna hear from a little bit later, but another great, great way to see that shared decision-making process and making sure that the teachers are being evaluated fairly and in a way that we can really improve our practice. We believe we set the standard for the collaborative nature at our schools. Lots of good collaboration happening between teachers, between parents, between administrators, all of those great things. And one of our favorites, of course, is that, that we have a wide variety of site options and really unique school programs at all of the schools in Florida. So here are the things that we kind of think the district can do better. So while we have this great shared decision-making document, we do believe that it fell by the wayside for this, for this process. We were never asked, we were never consulted, and we kind of feel like we weren't ever going to be asked. So that's, that's a real challenge. This, everyone else is doing it, this is what we're hearing, that all the neighborhood districts are, are having full day kindergarten. We're not really sure that a decision should be based on an every, everyone else is doing it until we really have time to look at exactly what those programs look like, and that's the missing piece right now. We don't know, yes, they might have extended day, yes, they might have all day, but what does that program really look like to everyone else? And the support and safety of our students, you know, we wanna make sure that they're really supported at school, they've got all the access to, to the resources that they need, and that they're safe. We know that there's, you know, one school that has one supervisor for 75 kindergartners at lunchtime, and that's really scary and very unsafe in my opinion. Some of the misconceptions that we feel like are out there in terms of full day kindergarten are the financial implications. Well, we know we're not getting any more ADA, we are gonna have to hire extra people. It has to have support. We have to have supervisors for them at lunch. They can't open their juice boxes and their milk cartons and find a way around the school. You know, we have eighth graders out on the yard. We need to make sure that that's taken into consideration. The test scores, I know that's kind of another big one, that this is gonna improve their test scores. Kindergartners are so far removed from testing. By the time these kindergartners are testing, the test is gonna look completely different. So I wanna give us some time to feel like, feel out what that end of test is gonna look like. And then the misconception of the Common Core standards, and that they're so much harder, there's so much more. We feel like good teachers can do it. It's, it's, the Common Core standards are really exciting, they're really great with a great program, no problem. So, we wanted to let you know, because you might not know, what does kindergarten look like in Pedelema? So we're gonna invite a couple of people up to explain what it looks like at their site, and then I'll fill in for those sites that aren't represented. McDowell. Hey, I'll start. So this is McDowell, these are McDowell's kids, and they already do an extended day. They dismiss it to 2:00. They do their English, English language development in the afternoon, they felt like that was a really key piece that they needed. And so their afternoons are for writing and socialization through structured play. So that's, they are already extending their day until 2:00. So, so they're kind of reading, reading away there. Okay, I'll just penguin too. Here's my room. So, one of the Pengrove teachers does literacy intervention for first grade, that's, that's her charge. There are other kindergarten programs, AM/PM, so just like traditional AM/PM sort of situation, the AM teacher is the help and support in the afternoon, the afternoon teacher is the help and support in the morning. So that, that those children basically have two potential full-time teachers all day, so that's. Vali Vista? Really? All right. Valley Vista, I'm gonna know so much about all these programs. So these are Valley Vista students. So they do All-Star readers in their afternoon extensions, homie genius groups based on student need. The groups are fluid and they change as the student needs change. If they are ready to move to another group, then they do that. If they need to move back with another group, they do that. They move on it through Thursday. They range in size from as large as six to as large as 14, just based on, on what they need. The most needy of the children are there four days a week after school. Yay!
Hi, my name is Jeanette RC from Redford. And our program is very much like the McNear program, where our students are there in the morning and dismiss, and right, right after we do our All-Star program as well, and it's ever-changing based on the needs of the students. But currently, we have it so that our children go Monday through Friday, the same group, and then as they exit out, a new group comes in. And it's a great way to do small group intervention. And then after, when we have our lunch, and we have intervention also in the afternoon with the reading specialist students. And that definitely varies. We were with first graders earlier in the year, and now we have fourth grade. So the intervention is just wherever the need is, and that's on a rotation basis. And so that's pretty much what we do, and after that, it's cleanup, and that's when prep for the next day, future centers. Thank you.
And I'll speak for McDowell. My name's Mary Beth Cohen. And what we do is, well, we have one K-1 combination class, and because of our numbers, sometimes that happens, and I happen to be that teacher, so I'm teaching all day. But the other thing that we've done, the other deal that's been very successful, is that we do reading intervention, the kindergarten teachers do a reading intervention program for first grade students, where we take small groups of students and we work with them intensively to bring up their reading skills. And I think our first grade teachers can testify that it is working really well, and that these groups kind of evolve through the course of the, this, we're not seeing this, this fine reading, what we do. But, so we do the reading intervention, and of course, for some years, we have a K-1 combination, so we address those kids, and it's fine, we teach you all day.
This is what we know about. Okay, so, Jerry Collins School, we have a two-year early primary program, that's what we call it, we have our kindergarten first grade, that's early primary. Our kindergartners, of course, go home at lunch, our first graders stay until the end of the primary day. This, this afternoon time provides us one-on-ten, one-on-eleven instruction, full of enrichment, small groups, focused reading, mathematics. And then we, also, the K-1 teachers also support our mentor reading program. So, so this would completely destroy the program that we've built, essentially, and this is our intervention program for first grade, just making sure that they are good and ready, and we actually do have all the data on how much more ready our first graders are now. We've done the K-1 for four years, so we have data from before we did the multi-HK1, and since we started it, and, and just the tremendous growth and the readiness that, that our first graders are feeling when we go to second grade. So, they're pretty proud of our program as well.
Oh, okay, all right, very good. Our moral imperative, okay? Just before I get to sort of our overarching statement here about the fact that, I mean, you can see, first of all, that we as kindergarten teachers take very seriously our responsibility to provide the best possible program that we can for our students. And you can see from what was up here of all the different things that we tried, that we are open to change, we are open to reevaluating our programs, we are open to trying a variety of different things. So I just want to make clear to you before we kind of close things out, the reason that we're here is we were shocked, might be the proper word, surprised. When, I'm the PFT site representative for my site, when we were informed that the district was putting full-day kindergarten into negotiations. And the reason we were shocked and surprised was we know that this district prides itself on shared decision-making, and no one came to the kindergarten teachers, no one came to the parents in this district to survey them about their desires or wants or needs, no one came to the community. And so we feel pretty left out of what shared decision-making in our understanding is that you take all the people who are vested in a decision, and you put their best thinking together, and you make a really good decision. That's what our understanding of shared decision-making is. And what we're feeling right now is that a decision has been made that is being shared with us. And so we're disappointed by that. A couple other things I wanted to bring up is that, you know, I don't wanna go too far down the research path, because you can use research to prove so many things if you look hard enough, okay? But I do want you to know that the research is not overwhelming in any direction. That we met with Mr. Bowman just last week, because we did wanna kind of get through the end of meeting that was instigated by the kindergarten teachers. And he said that research is inconclusive and tends to disappear by the end of third grade. I kind of like to, you know, do my own research, and a couple of things that I found particularly distressing to me when I looked were that they did a big survey of Los Angeles City Schools who have had full-day kindergarten for quite a number of years, and found, and this surprised me, this is me speaking personally, because intuitively I would have not thought this the case, but they said full-day kindergarten showed no benefit for children who are economically disadvantaged or English language learners. That to me was quite a hmm, okay. Another piece that I found of concern came from the Rand Education Corporation about the behavior problems of kids who go to full-day kindergarten, which said children who participate in full-day kindergarten programs demonstrated lower levels of non-academic readiness skills under the fifth grade, including poor dispositions toward learning, lower self-control, and worse interpersonal skills than children in hard-day programs. So I think that the big point that I, we hope to really get across to you is that the quality of a program is of absolute importance, and that quantity does not always equal quality. You know, if, so when we're looking seriously at making improvements to our program, which we absolutely are open to, we need to really look at the fact that every site that's in Pedelema City Schools is not the same, and what is needed at every site may not be the same. So to kind of throw out a blanket solution of, we'll go for X hours of the day without really saying what would happen during that time, isn't a real deep solution. So what we propose is, and this is where we get to our moral imperative, is that the kindergarten teachers strongly believe that we stand behind school program choice for our kindergartens in the district. And that one-size-fits-all program doesn't fit for the families of Pedelema. That we take the time, I think, to really design quality changes. And so we're feeling that rushing a process doesn't result in a good process. Looking around and thinking, ah, maybe if we just do this, it's gonna solve all our problems. So what I propose, what we propose, not me, what we propose is this, that we take some time, and we really look, and we really do some careful planning to design the best possible kindergarten programs that we can have for all of the children at all of our sites. And to do that, we need as teachers to be given time and the support to work with our administration to, you know, evaluate what's happening in our current programs, look for areas where we think there's a deficit, identify it, see how we could make that better. And then, when we figure out what those things are, spend some quality time planning how we want to change them. And so, a part of that process also has to include resources and funding. You know, you can't just say, well, we have class sizes of 24, we can go as high as 28 now, we have no instructional assistance. So if you really wanna have a quality program, how are you gonna make that happen for the students? And then when we identify that, that's the time to move forward with changes that really will benefit kids and that have been well implemented. And so we're feeling at this point, because we have not gone through that process, that we would strongly recommend that this, the full-day kindergarten be taken off the table at negotiations, and that sites be allowed to make the improvements to their programs and use their kindergarten teachers' time in the way that each site deems is the most advantageous to its students. So thank you.
This is attached to the presentation that just took us. To support the well-being of our youngest students and the professionalism of our teachers, the PFT Executive Council demands that no changes take place at any school site until the shared decision-making process is followed. Thank you.
Did you wanna introduce yourself there, but once again?
Sure. I'm Colleen Maloney, and I am a teacher at Pengrove Elementary, and I'm also the PFT president.
Hi, if I wanted to speak on this, please talk. My name's Jennifer Friesen. I have a son at McNear who's in kindergarten currently, and a daughter who is three, and I'm planning on sending to make me here for kindergarten in a couple of years. I was upset when I heard about this decision, or possible decision, for two reasons. The first was I felt like it was out of nowhere, that no one had consulted any current kindergarten parents, any future kindergarten parents, that there had been no survey, at least that I had heard of, that there had been no public announcement of meetings in which this idea was gonna be discussed and the public was invited to attend. So I was really frustrated from that point of view. Second, I would also like to speak against the idea of going to full-day kindergarten, especially right from the start of the beginning of the school year. As a parent with a current kindergartner, I'd just like to share with you what he was like in the beginning of the school year at Pickup. He came home exhausted. He was tired. It was the end of his, when we went home, we had lunch, and he just kinda chilled for about an hour. He would read books, or he would do, you know, play with his Legos, he needed that downtime. He was not ready to be there till 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon at the beginning of the school year. And talking to some other parents, parent friends, I know he was not the only one. I have at least two friends whose kindergartners were still napping in the afternoon at the beginning of kindergarten, going home and taking a nap between 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon for, you know, an hour or two hours. So they were definitely not ready to be there until 3:00 in the afternoon. And I think it's important sometimes, we get so caught up in where we want our kids to be at a certain point, we forget to look back and meet somewhere they're at, at that time, and that they're only four and five years old when they're starting kindergarten. And a full school day is a long day. And it's not as if it's an unproductive time. They're thinking, and they are engaged, and they are using a lot of physical energy sometimes, and a lot of mental energy. And if you really want them to be able to do that at their best, then you have to meet them where they're at in the amount of time that they can actually do that for. Those are my thoughts.
Hi, I'm Susie Parsons. I'm a parent at McNear Elementary, and I have two sons. One is in second grade and one is going to start kindergarten in the fall. Forgive me for reading this, I'm just better to get my points across that way. I would like to express my concern, my concern over the possibility of McNear moving to a full-day kindergarten this fall. The transition from preschool to elementary school is a big enough one as it is. Five-year-olds, many of whom still nap, do not need to be in school for a full day where they become overstimulated and exhausted. McNear's morning kindergarten program is wonderful, and we have been excited for our second son to attend this fall, but my husband and I are strongly against going for a longer day than what is currently in place. Coming home for lunch and having quality quiet time with me is far more important to both my soon-to-be five-year-old and myself. There is no research that could convince me that remaining at school for the afternoon in a chaotic classroom with a 1:20 ratio could be better for my son than being home with me doing the same activities in a 1:1 ratio. McNear has a renowned kindergarten program that attracts families from across the district and from across town, my own family included. We live in the old Adobe district and chose to look elsewhere three years ago when our first son was starting school, because we did not want the full-day kindergarten program that was offered at our neighborhood school. We chose McNear because it had a traditional half-day program, and because after touring at least nine other elementary schools in various districts around town, we saw the specialness that the kindergarten program at McNear provides. Also worth mentioning is that in the afternoon at McNear, the kindergarten teachers provide an extremely valuable service to first-grade students who need extra help with their reading. This has been a very successful and much appreciated program at our school that parents would hate to see go. I urge you to take into consideration the concerns and suggestions offered by our experienced kindergarten teachers, and know that there are many families who would not see full-day kindergarten as a benefit, but rather as a detriment to our wonderful and unique kindergarten program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Miel Louvier. I have a McNear second grader, and then an incoming kindergartner next year, she's in preschool this year. And I second so much of what's been said that I'm gonna be fairly brief. My husband and I chose a really conscious process for transitioning our kids from preschool into McNear. My son went two days a week, half-day, then he went three days a week for a year, half-day. And then he went half an hour longer each day, but five days a week for kindergarten. And it was a really great transition, and the transition from kindergarten into first grade, when he went full day, it was hard. It was, it's a big step, that step into first grade, when they go full day and they become big kids. And I would like to, to not see that pushed on to smaller kids that I don't, I don't think are ready for that. We've chosen the same path for my daughter, and I was really disappointed also to find out that we were heading towards a full-day kindergarten. My four-and-a-half-year-old daughter, who will be in kindergarten next year, three days a week at preschool, she falls asleep at the dinner table on the days that she goes to preschool. And we have an early dinner in our family. It's not an 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock dinner, it's a, it's a 5:30 or 6:00 dinner, and she's combed out, head down on the dinner table, three nights a week. In touching just briefly on the research and the idea that maybe all-day kindergarten offers a better performance for first and second graders, and that maybe there's something that they're not getting that they need to get in the kindergarten now academically, I just wanna say that at McNear, my son got everything he needed in a half-day kindergarten. He got the clay, and he got the paint, and he got the letters, and he got the numbers, and he got the, you know, up to 20, and the ABCs, and the beginning reading, and the fun, and the free time, and the building with the waffle blocks, and the recess. He got it all in kindergarten, in a half-day. And, and as far as performing better for all-day kindergarten, my, my second grader is, is doing really well, you know? He's, he's right up there, and, and so I don't think that everyone, everyone needs an all-day kindergarten. And I just throw out there, hmm, my husband and I have chosen to keep our kids out of daycare, and the way that we chose to do that is that we work office shifts. I work nights and weekends, and he works during the day. And because it's important to us to, to be with our little people while they're ill, and not, not have them away from us for, for full days, because, because we think they need to be with us. So, thank you for hearing us.
Do I have anybody else for public comment? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment part of this piece, but I'm gonna kick it over real briefly. Steve, do you have anything that you want to add to this? And if not, I'd like to put maybe a little bow on it so I can explain to everybody else what's going on.
Just that, you know, we have heard from a number of parents on both sides of the issue. Many in support and some in opposition, where it's, I know we are taking to negotiations and is incorporated into the district's reopeners for this evening.
Okay. So for those watching at home or that are here that don't have any idea what reopeners mean or any of that, if you can just indulge me for a 30-second lesson, if I materially make a mistake, you'll guide me through this, Steve. The Federation of Teachers is, again, like I said, the union that represents the certificated teachers here in the district. Every year, we reopen the contract that's in existence between the district and the union, and each particular group gets to decide, I can't remember, is it three or four, there's some number where you get to reopen certain negotiation pieces of the contract. This is one of those. So there is a negotiation team that works for the district, that works with the Pedelema Federation of Teachers, negotiation- Federation of Teachers, negotiation team on this side. We greatly appreciate the comments here, that's what this is for, but we don't... The board does not negotiate the contract at a board meeting. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that that's how that works. I know that you all know that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody else knew that. So we take this information, we talk to the administration, and as the negotiations go on, this information that you presented tonight is a part of a position that may or may not be on the administration's side. Is that a fair statement, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to thank you very much for coming and sharing with us your thoughts.
Just one note then, this is the sun shining of the contract, which is required before we begin negotiations. We actually begin negotiations tomorrow morning.
All right? So that was taking a very complicated piece, hopefully that worked. Everybody, okay? So we're going to move on then, we are past public hearing already, and we're going to go to the adoption and approval of the general... Do you want a quick break, real quick, in case some folks need to... We do this kind of throughout the meeting, if people have to go, and we'll take a real quick, say, 90-second break, is that all right? Start back up. And I just want to remind you, there should be some yellow cards back in the corner of the boardroom back there. If anybody wishes to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, or actually that is on the agenda, and either fill out one of these, okay? So we'll call from these when we get to the public comment, and then if there's anything else that... No, let's go. All right, so we're going to move on to... So everybody that wants to speak, you need to have one of these, all right? And when we start, pretty soon thereafter, I'm going to tell you, if you don't have one and it's not up here, then we're not going to get speaking. So start early, okay? Please. All right, so the next item is the adoption and approval of the general, and I believe I have a refresh rate change.
Yes, I'd like, if we could move the comments from the public to after the second presentation under ING, before the third evaluation under ING.
All right, I'm going to clear the desk. Is anybody else...
I'm okay.
Now to get everybody home a little bit earlier tonight, I hope you're all okay with that. Doesn't mean you're not welcome to stay, everybody.
Yeah.
All right, so would that change?
So...
All those in favor? Very good. So let's go to, let's see, our report from, we have our Pelham Junior High in Kenilworth, and we also have students from Pendrove School. Why don't we start with Pendrove School? What do we have here for Pendrove School?
They brought the entire... You guys welcome my closer? You're on the street. But what's like for... It's amazing against the pictures then. Give us one second for our slideshow here.
Oh, sorry. It's all right, I'll fix it again.
Probably need to send it out to the other way.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, we'll start with number one.
One of Mufflet's and Good evening.
That's too dark. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
My name is Sam. I would like to introduce you to Pendrove Elementary School, pretty popular.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished school board members. My name is Andreas. I am a student council resident at Pendrove School.
Hi, I'm Kendall. Our name is Chris, and I'm hundred and eight committee member.
I'm Sophia. I'm in fifth grade, and I'm part of lunchtime activities.
My name is Ava. I'm in fifth grade, and I'm part of the lunchtime activities.
Hello, my name's Hannah, and I'm in fifth grade, and I'm part of principal advisory.
Hi, I'm Michael. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm in lunchtime activities.
Hi, my name's Jordan. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm on student committee, spirit committee.
Hi, my name is Lily. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm part of spirit committee.
Hi, my name's Haley. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm part of principal advisory.
I'm in sixth grade and part of principal advisory.
Our student council motto is committed to serving youth. That's what we're here doing tonight.
As student council members, we have many responsibilities.
We assist Mrs. Padaji in running our Wednesday assemblies. Sometimes we even get to give funds gifts for our whole school.
We give Mrs. Padaji advice when she needs it. We also set up lunchtime activities to keep students active.
Sometimes we are asked to speak to classrooms around the school to inform our fellow students about upcoming events.
As student council members, we also help organize fundraisers to help the community.
Our camp food drive brought in 3,055 food items for the needy parents.
Mainly, our job as student council members is to promote spirit at our wonderful school.
We have many great spirit days already this year.
I have a journey day.
Wacky tacky winter air. Also, favorite sports day.
We even have our own Pendrove handshake, Pendrove school handshake.
Let's go, everyone, listen up, Pendrove. Listen up, Pendrove.
Our new...
Our new...
Our new...
Our new...
Our new...
My mom said she graduated from high school last year.
I think she's still a teenager.
She's an awesome teenager.
Ms. Padaji brings a lot of new energy to Pendrove. Good things happen when she's around.
With her arrival, we won the rabies $10,000 grant.
That's, we got to see a lot of our teachers get slammed.
We also received a major grant for a new computer lab.
What did that average day look like in Pendrove?
We have a recess ransom to below-grade students at lunchtime. That means that staff members with peers use their kind of lunch to make sure all students have something interesting to eat and to do during their lunchtimes.
Our recess ransom program was one of the main reasons we were honored with the California Distinguished School Award in 2010.
For upper graders like us, we have lunchtime sports competitions.
My team won first place in the football tournament last year. It was cool. This year, my team got first place in volleyball.
My team won second place in basketball this year.
The best part is, we get cool notes.
We even have academic contests at lunch, like grade-level math contests.
I practice at lunch for science and math.
So there are lots of things to do during the Pendrove brunch.
Also, it's not a problem to have alter visits at a school.
Authors from really cool books like The Family, Three Years, and Invisible Powers.
Our assemblies are pretty cool, too.
The Amazing Double Age came and gave us the coolest assembly ever.
The Peanut Gallery gave us a great hands-on math demonstration.
There are many after-school clubs for students to participate in as well.
The Spanish club, the chess club, golf, reading class, girls' lawn, and some teachers offer tutoring and homework help, too.
At Pendrove School, we also have many nice fundraisers.
Many of these are to help raise money for our sixth-grade camp.
The Halloween carnival, skate night, the accordion festival.
We will have a positive feed at open house.
The jogathon was really fun, and we raised thousands of dollars.
Ice cream sales sees candy, stands for camp beyond the glory.
And to top that off, Loganita's money.
For parents' own, of course.
There are many awesome things about Pendrove.
The field trips are great. I can't wait for sixth-grade camp.
We have the best custodian ever, Fred Rock.
My teacher, Miss McBride, is so awesome.
For me, I love the talent show. I sank that fire to the rain last year. I can't wait to be in the talent show again this year.
And we have awesome recess supplies.
The coffee was just hardly ever still mine, actually.
We have awesome staff. The yardies are very helpful.
Pendrove gives me a chance to show my leadership skills and win sports tournaments.
We have the best student council ever.
Above all...
Pendrove has a great sense of community.
Woo-hoo! And we love our new club!
I promise I did not write this script with them, that was my turn. I'm the senior student council advisor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the floor means that... How about Pelham Junior? Do I have to tell them? Folks, we're going to take a real quick break after this. After the number of the court, so if you guys want to just, unless you absolutely positively have to go over it.
I'm Maggie Boyd, and I'm president at Pelham Junior High School.
Our boys' basketball season finished off with all performances by both teams. The eighth-grade boys will recognize our Monday assemblies for a strong season, and next week, we will honor our seventh-grade boys who won 18 straight games to win the league championship. Growth's live open through the last week with a very strong summer to make great teams. We are now opening up a wrestling and spring chap season. Our counselors have been out to all our sixth-grade year elementary schools to register and meet with students. We had a sixth-grade parent night last month with 400 parents in attendance. Our preliminary enrollment figures indicate a growth of 20 to 30 students. Our eighth-grade students also attended a Pelham High School orientation night last month, during which they toured various classrooms and met staff and administration. We presented Nightmare on Puberty Street, Prize of Permanente, hospitals, drama performance on Thursday, January 10th, for both sevens and eighth graders. This was an educational and entertaining show that provided useful information, knowledge, and respect for growing up. Coming up in March, we will be presenting the Courage to Live program in cooperation with the Snowmont County Superior Court. This is a program for eighth graders and provides testimonials and information about leading a drug-free life. Judge Gary Nasler, Pelham resident, is the featured speaker. Our sixth-grade academy parent night orientation was held on Monday, December 17th, at 6:30 in our multipurpose room in classrooms. We had 60 parents in attendance and enrolled 38 students within two weeks. Beginning February 22nd, students outside of the Pelham district will be able to apply to the program until we reach past the 64th. Our annual winter camp food drive provided 22 PJHS families with food baskets collected and prepared by our PJHS leadership class. This was done right before the winter break, and we are sure it helped out everybody involved. Renaissance award certificates were distributed last week and again this week to students earning a GPA of 3.0 or better. Four teams were recognized individually in front of their peers in the NPR during Saturday. 60% of our students were on the list. Students receive a certificate and a wallet-sized card to carry on them for prizes and discounts at school. Congratulations to our honor roll students. Our science department purchased 16 laptop computers as part of their PEF grant along with the Wi-Fi access in the science rooms. They will soon have the option of running and assisting the seventh-grade curriculum in life and biological science. Our school site council is beginning to use Google surveys in place of the old-style multi-page service. We will let you know how this transition is working in future reports. We're looking forward to finishing off the next grading period with a Valentine theme dance Friday, February 22nd, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Leadership class students will be selling tickets in the courtyard for four days prior to the dance. Thank you for the opportunity to perform.
How about Kenilworth? Do we have to move to Kenilworth?
Good evening. I am Spencer Orkelson.
And I'm Julie Tannen.
We have had a great start to the new year at Kenilworth.
Our eighth-grade boys' basketball team won league championships. Our seventh-grade girls' volleyball team were fourth in the league and went to the tournament. Our wrestling team is practicing and looking forward to their first match in track practice will be starting soon.
On March 3rd, our seventh graders will be taking the star writing test. Some of our eighth graders will be soon taking the honors English test for high school.
We have had two assemblies since player break about the effects of bullying and building sufficiency. Jake Valentine, who performs at schools throughout the country, shared his message through his personal story in songs, and Kaiser presented Nightmare on Puberty Street.
We are celebrating Valentine's Day with candy grounds being delivered on Thursday by our leadership students, and we had a dance last Friday night.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share what is happening at the best place on our video justice.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ron?
Yes, absolutely. Four times a year, I think, really wonderful opportunity to invite up Loretta Cruz-Maggi, the president of CSEA. But tonight, I have to take a moment, because I'll tell you, the person that she's recognizing took care of me for many years. Anibal is one of the people I just love in this district. He has such pride in his work, and such pride in the school, and really makes that place shine. So I just had to say a few words beforehand and so we're to Loretta.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and all the lovely people who came to support our students. As Ron said, my name is Loretta Cruz-Maggi. I have the privilege of being the president of the classified unit here at Pelham City Schools. For those of you who don't know what the classified, what that unit's made up of, we are secretaries, custodians, campus supervisors, bus drivers, student service workers, and maintenance staff, just to mention a few classifications. I am very pleased to introduce CSEA's member of the quarter, Anibal Almarel. So would you come up? Anibal started with the district as a custodian at Casa Grande in September of 1993. In September of 1999, he became the night lead custodian at Casa Grande. Then, in July of 2001, Anibal became the head custodian for Casa Grande, which is the job he currently holds. Now, I would like to read about some of Anibal's qualities that may vary and be for our community to choose him for his honor. Anibal is the most hard-working and dedicated classified employee I know. He works shorthanded on a regular basis. He never complains. He is the go-to guy for all, who works for all at Casa, is respected and admired by classified employees, certificated employees, administrators. He is always cheerful, no matter what difficult or unpleasant job he is given. His lunch is interrupted most days to clean a mess or fix something that has broken. He is a quiet leader who manages custodial staff with knowledge and competent guidance. He is dependable, cheerful, helpful, and that is when he's being pulled in 100 different directions. He leads by example. He is always nice to coworkers and students alike. He is a happy and friendly person. He has come to the rescue for the cafeteria staff by helping to repair the barbecue with screws or wheels. His willingness to do whatever it takes to get the job done sets him apart over and above. Please join me in congratulating Anibal Almarel as our member of the quarter. Certificate for member of the quarter for this quarter.
Thank you.
And $25 gift to me, Paula.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Loretta. Always a pleasure, and we remember that this is a team sport. Educating each other takes the heart of everyone. Thank you both very much. All right, now, we will take a very quick break for anybody who would like to come home. Before you jump up, I want to make sure that you know that you're welcome to stay. Public comment will be next on the agenda, and there's very important things that are following that, so if you've got nothing better to do tonight, we'd love to have you. Other than that, if you could help me out by kind of in an orderly but quickly manner, make your way out if you're going to make your way out at this time. Thank you very much. All right, so let's have just a little...
Skills and one sports tournaments.
We have the best student council ever, above all.
Hangover has a great sense of community.
Woo-hoo! And we love our new club!
I promise I did not write this script with them, that was my turn.
This is our student council advisor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we are being said. How about them little junior?
Ron?
Do I have to tell those?
Ron, what do you think?
How? Yes, I can back it up. Could you probably? Folks, we're gonna take a real quick break after this. Yeah, we are. After you. After the number of the course, so if you guys wanna just... Unless you absolutely positive that you go over it.
I am Judy Lloyd and I'm president at Peluma Elementary School. Our boys' basketball season finished off with all performances by both teams. The eighth grade boys will recognize our Monday assembly for a strong season and next week we will honor our seventh grade boys who won eighteen straight games to win the league championship. Girls, while both of you last week were very strong, some of you made great teams. We are now opening up a wrestling and spring championship. Our counselors have been out to all our sixth grade year elementary schools to register and meet with students. We had a sixth grade parent night last month with four hundred parents in attendance. Our preliminary enrollment figures indicate a growth of twenty to thirty students. Our eighth grade students also attended a Peluma High School orientation night last month during which they toured various classrooms and met staff and administration. We presented Nightmare on Puberty Street, Prize of Permanente, hospitals, drama performance on Thursday, January tenth for both sevens and eighth graders. This was an educational and entertaining show that provided useful information, knowledge, and respect about growing up. Coming up in March, we will be presenting the Courage to Live program in cooperation with the Sonoma County Superior Court. This is a program for eighth graders and provides testimonials and information about leading a drug-free life. Judge Gary Nasler, Peluma resident, is the featured speaker. Our sixth grade academy parent night orientation was held on Monday, December seventeenth at six-thirty in our multipurpose room and classrooms. We had sixty parents in attendance and enrolled thirty-eight students within two weeks. Beginning February twenty-second, students outside of the Peluma district will be able to apply to the program until we reach past yet sixty-four. Our annual winter camp food drive provided twenty-two PJHS families with food baskets collected and prepared by our PJHS leadership class. This was done right before the winter break, and we are sure it helped out everybody involved. Renaissance award certificates were distributed last week and again this week to students earning a GPA of three point oh or better. Four teams were recognized individually in front of their peers in the NPR during Saturday. Sixty percent of our students were on the list. Students receive a certificate and a wallet-sized card to carry on them for prizes and discounts at school. Congratulations to our honor roll students. Our science department purchased sixteen laptop computers as part of their PEF grant along with the Wi-Fi access in the science rooms. They will soon have the option of running and assisting with the seventh grade curriculum in life and biological science. Our school site council is beginning to use Google surveys in place of the old-style multi-page service. We will let you know how this transition is working in future reports. We're looking forward to finishing off the next grading period with a Valentine theme dance Friday, February twenty-second from six-thirty to nine p.m. Leadership class students will be selling tickets in the courtyard for four days prior to the dance. Thank you for the opportunity to perform.
How about Kenmore? Do we have to move to Kenmore?
Good evening. I am Spencer Orkelson.
And I'm Julie Tannen.
We have had a great start to the new year at Kenmore.
Our eighth grade boys' basketball team won league championships. Our seventh grade girls volleyball team were fourth in the league and went to the tournament. Our wrestling team is practicing and looking forward to their first match in track practice will be starting soon.
On March third, our seventh graders will be taking the star writing test. Some of our eighth graders will be soon taking the honors English test for high school.
We have had two assemblies since player break about the effects of bullying and building sufficiency. Jake Valentine, who performs at schools throughout the country, shared his message through his personal story and songs, and Kaiser presented Nightmare on Puberty Street.
We are celebrating Valentine's Day with candy grounds being delivered on Thursday by our leadership students, and we had a dance last Friday night.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share what is happening at the desk with honor video test.
Very good, thank you very much. Ron?
Yes, absolutely. Four times a year, I think, really wonderful opportunity to invite up Loretta Cruz-Maggi, the president of CSEH. But tonight, I have to take a moment because I'll tell you the person that she's recognizing, took care of me for many years. Anibal is one of the people I just love in this district. He has such pride in his work and such pride in the school and really makes that place shine, and so I just had to say a few words beforehand and so we're to Loretta.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and all the lovely people who came to support our students. As Ron said, my name is Loretta Cruz-Maggi. I have the privilege of being the president of the classified unit here at Peluma City Schools. For those of you who don't know what the classified, what that unit's made up of, we are secretaries, custodians, campus supervisors, bus drivers, student service workers, and maintenance staff, just to mention a few classifications. I am very pleased to introduce CSEH's member of the quarter, Anibal Almarel. Anibal started with the district as a custodian at Casa Grande in September of nineteen ninety-three. In September of nineteen ninety-nine, he became the night lead custodian at Casa Grande. Then, in July of two thousand and one, Anibal became the head custodian for Casa Grande, which is the job he currently holds. Now, I would like to read about some of Anibal's qualities that may vary and be for our committee to choose him for his honor. Anibal is the most hardworking and dedicated classified employee I know. He works shorthanded on a regular basis. He never complains. He is the go-to guy for all, who works for all at Casa, is respected and admired by classified employees, certificated employees, administrators. He is always cheerful, no matter what difficult or unpleasant job he is given. His lunch is interrupted most days to clean a mess or fix something that has broken. He's a quiet leader who manages custodial staff with knowledge and competent guidance. He's dependable, cheerful, helpful, and that is when he's being pulled in a hundred different directions. He leads by example. He is always nice to coworkers and students alike. He is a happy and friendly person. He has come to the rescue for the cafeteria staff by helping to repair the barbecue with screws or wheels. His willingness to do whatever it takes to get the job done sets him apart over and above. Please join me in congratulating Anibal Almarel as our member of the quarter. Certificate for member of the quarter for this quarter.
Thank you.
And twenty-five long gifts to me, Paula.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Loretta. We're always pleased to have you. Remember that this is a team sport and educating each other takes the heart of everything.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. All right, now, we will take a very quick break for anybody who'd like to come home. Before you jump up, I want to make sure that you know that you're welcome to stay. Public comment will be next on the agenda, and there's very important things that are following that, so if you've got nothing better to do tonight, we'd love to have you. Other than that, if you could help me out by kind of in an orderly but quickly manner, make your way out if you're gonna make your way out at this time. Thank you very much. All right, so let's have just a little, lack of a better term, huddle on how this works and what we're dealing here. Okay, so this is public comment on items that are not on the agenda. I'm gonna read to you a very long statement, but I'm gonna explain it to you first. There's a thing called the Brown Act. The Brown Act says that we can't make decisions as a public body unless we notice the public that we're gonna talk about, right? Can't do that, can't just make decisions when nobody knows what's going on. So we publish an agenda, we do it, I believe it's two days prior?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours prior. Posted, it goes to library, it goes online. Okay. So, this is the catch-all for things that are not on the agenda. The thing about things that are not on the agenda is that we can't discuss them or make decisions about them. It's an opportunity for you to share with us anything that you'd like to talk about that has a reasonable nexus to the school district, okay? So let me read this real quick, and I have four public comment cards, okay? So let me read this and then we'll jump into it. I know you're all on the edge of your seat right now. Under Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-four dot three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board, that's us, on any items of interest providing that relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district, okay? So we gotta talk about something relevant. In accordance with board policy VP nine-three-two-three, each speaker is allocated a total of five minutes per person to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on any subject matter, okay? So five minutes a person. I got four cards. It's working pretty good right now. It looks like we're right in there. Within the, while the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy specific to complaints against employees, okay? So there's a little sidebar, if we're gonna do a complaint on employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employees of meeting supervisor for investigation. Board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda, as I discussed earlier. The board values public comment and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, that we listen carefully and we appreciate and value the input from the public, okay? Make sense? So I've got four cards, and I'll just randomly call these up, and you'll just come up here and tell us what's going on. The first one is Juan, is it Dominguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Dominguez, if you'd go onto the podium? And you just state your address for.
Sixty-sixth twenty-second Road, Cali-12.
And this says it's in relationship to bus ride.
Bus ride, yeah.
Very good.
Montecarlo, we were notified that they were gonna take our bus ride, you know, and my first thing is who decides which bus goes and which ones stays? You know, it's not only my family that's gonna get, you know, left out, it's almost a total of ten kids that are either gonna have to transfer schools because we're actually almost at the border of Sevastopol, so it's a long bus ride for them. So, you know, the first thing is who decides that? The second thing is, it's in the middle of the year. You know, I mean, it's hard enough for a kid to go to a new school if it comes to transferring a new year, and now we're doing it, you know, right in the middle. Yeah, it's just the timing is really, really bad for them. And then, you know, like I said, we're right at the border, so I mean, right now we have a seventh grader, eighth grader, ninth grader, and a tenth grader. We have two kids that are gonna be in the Peluma school district also. So just in my family alone, you know, it's six kids, you know? So if they decide to move, I mean, that's gonna be a hardship, you know, on the district itself also. I don't know what they get for kids or whatever. So, you know, it's gonna be very hard for everybody, you know, to have their kids continue to come to Peluma. That's it.
Thank you very much. Fernando, I'm sorry, I have one more time, is it Bra? Fernando? I don't believe I said your address correctly.
Baragon. Baragon.
Baragon, thank you. You just chose, your address is wrong.
Okay, my address is on the cancellation of the bus.
I'm sorry, your physical looking address.
Fifteen fifteen D Stanley Quine Road.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm addressing the subject of the cancellation of the bus route, and I find it unfair how you can only take us through half the year of transportation to school and how only it would actually have been thirty students who are found affected because of this cut, and the rest of the students are fine, they have transportation throughout the entire of the year. I mean, how did you guys decide it was okay to cut the transportation for these students but not us? I find that just unfair. And since Prop thirty has passed, it states that transportation should not be cut. And my little sister, she is a premature baby, she was born at one pound, seven ounces, and the doctors reckon, they actually told me, you cannot let her out in cold, and it has been thirty-two degrees and below in Peluma in early mornings at which we have to get up, and it is not really recommended for my little sister to be out in the cold for my mom to drive me all the way to school because you just chose to cut it for thirty students and not the rest of them. And I just find it really unfair.
Okay, hello, I'm Gaby Aguero, and I'm one of the students involved in this cutoff of transportation.
Do I have a card for you?
Yeah.
So are you one range?
Yeah.
Three oh five range?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
So I'm just speaking for like thirty kids or more, and I just, when I heard the news, I couldn't believe it because I heard that Coast Guard Base gets like, gets another bus. So if they cut off the bus, they would get like, they would have another bus to take them to school, so the other thirty kids might have that, and I thought that was unfair, like.
Could you say it again? Could you explain it again? It's not fair to understand what you're saying.
I heard Coast Guard Base has another bus to take them to school.
An additional bus?
Yeah, an additional bus for them to get to school, but the thirty kids that don't have, like, they don't have the chance to get to school, so some of them might not go to school, or the parents have to work like at six in the morning, so they wouldn't have an additional bus as Coast Guard Base, and I thought that was unfair.
She's fine, don't worry about it. No problem.
Really, parents in the morning, they work from like six to really late, like five, four, three, and how do we get to school? I mean, are we gonna go out there at five in the morning at the school waiting for school to start? I mean, this transportation really is important to us, it's vital for us how we get there, how we get our transportation back and forth from school, and I mean, it's our education. Some parents really, literally, they can't, and I mean, carpooling, not everyone can carpool to there, like you said in our email letter. I mean, it's ridiculous, really. It means kids, some kids actually might lose their education if they don't have transportation to get to school. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Come in now. Thank you. No, Jose Gutierrez?
They cannot cover what I was gonna say, but I wasn't sure about the bus for the Coast Guard Base. That's the point I find is unfair to, they got more chance to bring the kids to school. Most of the people in here, the Spanish-speaking, work at a dairy farm, and most of the buses, they worry more about their cows than our kids, you know? You can't stop milk if they take your kids, it's gonna come back and feed us. You gotta feed us your child. And a lot of them, they don't have a, don't have a license, it's gonna be more worries to drive every day. And my point was that, who decide that? Who can help us with that? If there was too many kids and the bus, or you need another bus, right? If you're sick and your pills not working, you don't stop the medication, you get double doses. I think that's our work. If they take the whole bus, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it, but if you take this bus and you leave this bus, it looks like it's not working properly. That's my point. Mr. Dominguez and Gaby and the other kid, they cover most of my worries, you know? I mean, I got two kids in the school, next year's gonna be another one, somebody got three or four, and if I can help somebody, it's gonna fit only one more kid. I can't take three kids from somebody, and they're gonna have to look for, hey, can you take my kid? Can you take my kid? Sometimes they can't do it, you know? It's gonna be hard. We're gonna have to find a way to do it, because when our kids, they go to school, it's not gonna start for that, just because of bus, if we can get help with that, that'd be great.
Thank you very much for coming. We still have just a little bit of time, if anybody else would like to speak on it. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comments.
You wanna speak, there's associate lines, if you'd like to talk. You certainly may.
She was getting ready for a girl.
Do you have your card?
Yeah.
Okay. You just need to fill it out so I can keep it.
You'll never leave, not after.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Marisela, and I wanna talk about the bus, stopping the bus. My English is not that well, that's why I'm kinda nervous to be here.
We felt.
But I think it's important to talk about it because I'm a single mother of two kids. Luis, he's K grade, and I have another one that he is, he's four, and it's kinda hard for me to take my kid all the way over here. I live on Peterson Road, which is kinda far, and yeah, then we'll have to go with babysitter, and I also have to work sometimes very early in the morning, sometimes very late, and I'm kinda afraid of what's gonna happen with Luis if somebody doesn't help me out. So, yeah. That's, that's it. I hope you guys can help us. It's very important for, I guess, for all the kids.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Steve, just a quick question, is there a contact person at the district for this bus issue? If there's any other questions?
I think they've been contacting Crystal or Ridge.
Is everybody?
Yeah. I mean, if they have questions or concerns, you should address them to the director of transportation or the chief of business.
Thank you. All right, now I want to go ahead and close the public comments. And again, if anybody'd like to take a real quick break, we'd love to have you stay. You can ask. I'll take a quick break. So give me the record for breaks in a school. Buckle up, because we're not having any more.
And I told my colleagues to try to keep this under an hour, so.
All right, so we're gonna move on to item number three. Ron, if you would, please.
Oh, just wind up and we'll just take turns. So, good evening. We are here tonight to talk to you about the work that the teacher evaluation committee has done over, actually, a year, two years almost, and so I have three members of that committee here, Maureen Rutter.
Standing right in front of the committee, sorry.
Blocking.
It's the back of her head.
Maureen Rutter is the principal of McDowell, Kim Sharp, English teacher at Casa Grande, and vice president for secondary for Peluma Federation of Teacher, and Carrie Connell, who's a teacher at Cherry Valley. And Kim has told me that she probably won't be speaking tonight because of her.
You should hear her voice, it's really pretty.
Her voice. So.
I have some things.
We are going to, okay.
I just get to smile pretty tonight.
Not doing it, that's not doing it, I'm sure something will do it for me. Is it not advancing? It's not advancing. You got tired. A little further.
I like the joint tutorial.
Thank you very much.
How many people does it take to move a little slide?
All right, so the purpose of the committee is to really look at the research and best practices that are happening throughout the country in the realm of teacher evaluation. Nope, I went the wrong way. Sure, except for I'm gonna be done in a minute, because you guys are gonna take over. What? No, 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 actually, I will do it in a minute, because I'm just doing this first part and then I'm gonna change over because. So, so our intent here is to ensure that we develop an evaluation system that really is grounded in professional development. We want to make sure that that's available for all of our teachers. Sometimes our current system, which some of my colleagues will talk about, really focuses on checking off those who are not doing so well. We need to make sure that we are providing professional development for the best teachers as well as those that are struggling. Also, this will provide us clear documentation for those teachers who, after we have tried and provided as much professional development as possible, do not seem to be fitting into the teaching profession and need to be guided to another direction. So, and I'm going to let Maureen talk about, a little bit about this.
So some of the rationale behind this is, and I think you have a copy with your board documents.
Well, actually, they have no copies, because we get so sidetracked that I can do that while you're in here. All right, so I'm sorry about that.
So, the slide that you're seeing right now is a snapshot of our current evaluation document, and Ron's passing those out to you now. All seven standards of the Californian teaching profession are part of the document, but as you can see up here, there's only three ways to rank a teacher. So the first one is satisfactory, strong, that's one category, the next category is needs improvement, and the third category is not observed. So one of the things that we're hoping as we move to a new process and a new document is that we can definitely break apart satisfactory, strong. When we evaluate classified staff, we can put meets, meets the standard, exceeds, or outstanding, and for teachers, we have a lot of outstanding teachers, and we can't even document it as part of our current document. So we've all read this book, and I got a copy of it here, as you can see. So everybody on the committee was given this book, and we read it as our summer kind reading last year. Charlotte Danielson is kind of the, in the United States, she would be the guru of teacher evaluation. So that's the document, and it really goes through all the rationale behind the parts of teaching that come to play, and divides it up into that, different parts of the framework, and also then talks about all the different kind of stages. So instead of going from a checkbox thing, it's more of a rubric. So.
You also have this document. It's about five several spaces that, it's the one that.
So the Chicago Public Schools, they have just redone their evaluation process, and this is the rubric that they use. It's, but it's also, what's nice about this is also aligned with the common core. So as you look up here, you can see that, first of all, there's, it's divided into different domains, this one's planning and preparation, and it has. And it has components in each of the domains. And as you can see, there's four different ways to, to mark where a teacher is in each, in each domain, from unsatisfactory to what they call basic and efficient and to distinguish. We're not sure we're good. Yeah, distinguished is a nice word. And so we're looking at, at shifting to something that really gives teachers feedback. And with a rubric like this, you can look at where you are. A teacher can give, before the evaluation process, they would look and kind of be able to talk to their administrator about where they see themselves on this and where they would like to grow as a professional. The other thing is that, I'm sorry. The other thing is our current process is kind, is limited. Right now, teachers are evaluated, once they're permanent, they're evaluated once every four years as part of the evaluation. It's required that the administrator observes them in their class twice during the year and for, for the, as part of the evaluation cycle. So the actual observation in the classroom could be as short as maybe an hour over the course of the year or maybe two hours as a minimum. Lots of people do more, but that's what's minimally required. So we're hoping to develop a process that's much more meaningful.
So, did you want me to take this off?
I'll try.
Two of you?
We got it.
So if my voice goes, then my colleagues will help me out here. Basically, this has been going on for a couple of years. We had a small group a couple of years ago go to Berkeley and hear about the changes in evaluation and what's been done across the nation. And we were intrigued. And so we're able to join a cohort of lots of districts in Sonoma County, up at SCO, for four full, long days of looking at intense research and different rubrics and different opinions from all over and different, different types of educational groups, which led us to our decision, should we do this? And we really felt that group, I was part of that group that went to those days in SCO. And I'm also part of the Negotiations Committee and Executive Council, and we all really felt that we needed a better process, something that was really, really rooted in that research and also incorporated the staff development that's just so essential to good teaching and outstanding teaching. Out of us. There you go.
So the Negotiations Committee at that point recommended that we establish a subcommittee. And that subcommittee is what's been meeting this weekend. We'll let Carrie talk.
So we, I think we're moving forward.
Okay. Okay. So, so we have, we have met for monthly throughout this year, a fairly large committee, which you'll see the, the next. Eight administrators and seventeen teachers, really representing every school in the district because we really wanted it to be inclusive and, and make sure everybody had their say because it is such an important change in the district. There you go.
Thank you. So the book that you see, we really dug into, we found that if so many districts were basing their work on, on some, on a piece of work, on a piece of research and a, and a framework, and we thought, well, let's start with that seminal work. So we, you know, started from the foundation and then looked at a, I'm going to look at my notes here, a joint proposal from the American Federation of Teachers and the American Association of School Administrators. We looked at, you know, what, what their recommendations were as well. And then we dug in for multiple meetings, long, arduous meetings where, you know, we really, you know, had to have some, you know, some big talks and, and figure out, well, what's been done and what do we like and what do we not like? And these, these meetings were, this, this is the hard work that had to be done. And so in, in doing this, we said, oh, we really like this, we really like, let's put it all together. Then we had this huge, long document and, and then thought, where are we going to go from here? And the, the thing that's so great about that is that this is a, this is an exemplary committee for looking at shared decision making. You've got everyone who has a place at the table, all voices are heard and valued, teachers with wide varieties of experience and, and administrators with, you know, a variety of experience. And, and we look at, at, you know, where, where should we, where should we go next? And what's very impressive about this committee is that it is co-chaired by district and by Petaluma Federation of Teachers. And, and that, it is really, you know, like Kim and Ron work together to build the agendas and, and then to, to chair the, the meetings and facilitate the meetings and take notes to, you know, to maintain transparency. And then everyone in the room, at this point, we've really developed trust, and everyone in the room feels that they have a voice and it will be heard and can speak up and say, I appreciate the agenda and here's some thoughts I have. And then it's not like one person's going to railroad that and bring it off to another place. We listen to it and we decide, well, that's great, but we're going to stick on agenda or hmm, how can we best use our time and really our district's money? And we look in this room and we see, we just kind of start adding up all the dollars and cents and think, how can we be best using our time and money today? And like, for example, the last meeting we had, we had a plan and then there was a proposal from someone who happened to be an administrator. We all looked at it and we thought, that's a really good idea and that's going to help us be much, much more efficient and move forward and feel better. And we did, and it was a very effective meeting. And as a result, we looked at, even though we had, I don't want to use the word slog, but I just did, it is, you know, really, you know, done our, done our homework and, and looked through all this research and these rubrics and frameworks, you know, a number of them over two years. We finally looked at one and said, well, this one takes Danielson, which is the work, is the foundation of all this work, and the missing piece is Common Core standards. Hey, look, they just did that in Chicago. So we're going to, where we're at right now is we are, we're looking at the, we're using the rubric from Chicago as our, as our base, and then we're refining it and revising it to meet the needs and goals of Petaluma City Schools.
All right. So, so, so as I said, we've been meeting since August. We had three meetings left, we're meeting actually twice in March, and a full day in April, and then May. And our, our charge is to come up with not only a document, and, and the one that you heard about from Chicago is, is really at the heart of what we're going to be doing and revising that to better fit our needs. But then also a process that really incorporates more than what, what we're doing now is primarily, as was mentioned before, principals go in, administrators go in and observe teachers for an hour, a couple of times a year. And that, that captures what's going on in the classroom. But the domains that are addressed in, in this document include the preparation and planning and the professional responsibilities and of, of teachers as well. And so our next task, besides refining the document and making sure it fits us, is to determine what the process is going to look like. What are we going to use to, to measure the growth of teachers? Things that other districts are using are teacher self-reflection, student and parent surveys. Portfolios, thank you. That's the, you just looked right through my head. Portfolios of teacher work. And then, of course, there's, there's the issue of, of the state legislature and the requirement, they're going to be talking about of student, student achievement. There are a number of things we need to talk about, how we measure all of the things that teachers do. And that's the wonderful thing about these documents is it, it doesn't assume that, that there's a simple piece, you go in and watch what a teacher does and you can decide how they've been doing for four years. But it really is a complex piece that we're going into. Then we will come up with a document that we will take to the table, hopefully get agreement to move forward. And because the Federation is, is deeply involved with everything that we're doing, I don't expect there will be problems. And then we will pilot it next year. And the, the, everybody on the committee agreed for a two-year commitment, so we will probably not meet monthly, but maybe quarterly to get feedback and make sure that what we're doing is working. And make sure that the document we end up with is fluid so that as we see needs for changes or as most of, well, some of us are aware, Fuentes, you know, the, the Stole Bill that determines how teachers are evaluated is going to be changed. AB5 was the attempt last year that was pulled at the last minute, and that will certainly be coming forward again. And we will have to look at the, the tool that we use in the light of new legislation. So we, we are moving forward. We're, it, it is really an exciting process. It's been a great group of teachers and administrators working together to, to determine what's best for, really, essentially what's best for kids, which we didn't mention the entire.
We waited for the end. We wanted to like compare.
But yes, yes. So, so if you have, if you have any questions.
First thing that jumped to mind, I had a couple of them actually. Why Chicago Public Schools? Is that some sort of paragon of teacher evaluation?
No, actually, we weren't looking at Chicago at all. We were looking at six other from, from, what's North Carolina?
D.C.
Washington, D.C.
L.A.
Unicloide. Houston. See, all these people have been there, part of it. And in fact, what happened is one of our administrators said, oh, I just found Chicago's rubric, and it not only is a modern, a current version of what Charlotte Danielson's doing because she worked with them, but it includes the Common Core. And I said, don't say a word. We've been spending months looking at six. I'm not ready to bring in another one. And she didn't listen to me.
But we had actually landed on, why not just do Danielson? Okay, well, Danielson's it. Let's do Danielson. But the missing piece is that it doesn't have Common Core. What are we going to do? Oh, wait, they just did that. So that's.
And this has really been the beauty of the group.
So that's really, that's what you talked about, the change in an agenda is when somebody brought that forward. And we were ready to move forward with Danielson's model, and this was an update of that.
When, when Carrie talked about the idea that we all have a voice at the table, truly, people are doing research on their own, you know, because we have all this extra time. And they're doing research and they're looking for those components that we've been talking about for so long and really intensely looking at what would be the best way to have a good, solid process for our teachers. So that's really kind of where people have been bringing in things the whole time, so.
And the last year committee that went up to SCO for four days, we intensely looked at many of them last year. So we already came into this year's process with a lot of background.
Second question coming. I see that you have the professional goal, professional performance reviews, but what about basic employee responsibilities and obligations, punctuality, attitude, coachability, if you will, play nice with others? Is that a part of this? Because, you know, I have employees, I represent a lot of businesses, and I'm well aware of all kinds of employee evaluation methods. So is, is that a component of this?
Yes. The part that's professional responsibilities, I mean, really playing nice with others, coming to meetings, being, participating in the work that's going on at the district level, all of those components, which really are not much of a component of the current evaluation process. And, and as we go through here, we will also make sure that all the, all the components that are specifically Petaluma will also be included. But, but that was one of the things that a lot of people liked was a whole, a quarter of it of this document is on professional responsibilities and what, what we do as professionals.
And next, objective criteria. I mean, I, I get subjective criteria. I mean, I understand why it's out there, but are there objective criteria components in here? Not me rating one of these people like the Five Guys deciding what an elephant is and deciding, well, she's this, and she, her perspective, well, she's that, and hers perspective, she's that. Do you have built-in objective criteria that, that anybody can sit down because of the, the way it's set up, you don't have to sit there and watch a teacher all day and figure it out? That just, she didn't do this, or she did this, and she did this, and she did this, so she's wonderful.
Mr. Valley, that's the thing that we like about this because it's a rubric. It actually, and when you have time to look at it, it specifically states verbiage about this person's doing this or this person's doing this as you go across. Our current document doesn't have that at all. It lists standards and you just check off. So it, it can be considered very subjective. So this is much more objective. It, it takes what we would consider a, you know, a, what's it called? We may change the terms, but unsatisfactory, that's the person is doing this kind of thing in this category and a, you know, exemplary teacher is doing this. And it really could, it speaks right to, you know, they're doing this, they're doing this, they're doing this. So it's much more objective.
And that's one of our charges this year with the process is to determine what are the ways in which we measure these criteria. And, and we've just opened that conversation.
Okay. Last comment. Why four years? Why not two years? Or why not a system if she's had three complaints or more, now her four years is off the table and we're down to every year? What's magic about four years?
There, there actually, four years is, is an agreement that this was made a number of years ago. That may be one of the things that.
What's the rationale? You know, it's why, why four years, not two years?
It's the, it's the Stole Act. We have to, we're in an agreement with our department.
Right. It, it was initially, every, every other year, a lot of districts do that. Teachers that are proficient are, you know, meeting all the standards. It was determined a few years ago, I'm not sure who in the room might have been there, that, that a four year, that four years was, was reasonable. Now, if they're not performing, we have within the contract that a principal at any time can say, your, your teaching has clearly changed and so we're going to move your evaluation up to next year and so that you will begin, we will evaluate you next year again, even if you didn't, weren't supposed to have an evaluation for three years, so that that can be changed. We haven't really determined exactly, the, the four years is what we currently have in our system. We haven't had that conversation on what would be the appropriate amount. I will tell you, with high school principals in the room and even on a four-year basis, they're evaluating, you know, principal and three assistant principals, maybe fifteen, sixteen teachers a year. And, and just to get in there and watch them for an hour, a couple of times a year is about all they get done. And I look at the evaluations every year. And so we need to find a balance, and that's also part of our charge. How do we get more support in the classroom for teachers on a regular basis instead of just going in and, you know?
Last comment, maybe on the rating system? I see that unsatisfactory, basic, proficient, distinguished. What about a system that every teacher understands A, B, C, D? And we can go plus as a month.
That's definitely going to be part of our conversation.
There, there is some conversation. I said that fantastically.
Oh, no. That's not.
Yes, I think that might be tongue in cheek, Mr. Valley.
And personally, I actually like a little bit more of a descriptor than A, B, C, D. But I'm sure that conversation, it sounds like some people have already had that conversation before I got there. But, but if you, and I know that you have plenty of things to read, but if you look through here, you can see, and not right now, but I gave it to you for your homework, you know, some very specific, some of the teachers' plans for student assessment are aligned with the standards-based learning objectives identified for the unit and lesson, but others are not. So it is really specific and instead of just saying, I think you need improvement, an administrator can sit down with the, the, the teacher, and if they think that they're basic and the teacher says, no, I think I'm distinguished, you can say, okay, you show me in here where that, you know, where that lies. If you're distinguished, just show me how that fits the rubric. So it's not so subjective, it's really much more objective. Okay. You're welcome. Anybody else who has, let Mike ask all the questions.
Lots of hard work, obviously. Thank you for putting in all this time.
And I, I really enjoyed hearing how you all worked so well together. So it was very.
It's just almost become friends, you know? I don't want to go too far.
Christmas card pal.
I should go take notes. Sign me out.
Everybody back with me? Three, four minutes, twenty seconds. Everybody was here?
Yes.
All right. I'll say. This is the second, and all those in favor?
Hi.
Bounce around a little bit. We're going to move to activities, correspondence, school board members, Sonoma County Poor Appreciation Dinner, Adult End Evaluation, Announcing and Intending to the Basketball Games, Casa Grande, and Home High School Tennis Match, and the Safe School Ambassador Room. We'll go to Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
So, no.
All those in favor?
All right.
Let's go to our first hold item and administration, new resources. Let's go to our first hold item, then Administration of Human Resources. And this is Resolution 121310, motion, Resolution 121310. Board of Education, the California State, Joint Union High School Districts, honoring the contributions of the administrators to quality education during the week of March 4, 2013, as Week of the School Administrator be adopted.
So moved.
And usually, I just sit here so quietly. I kept being involved all the time. So, so we are following the lead of the state and want to recognize the Week of the School Administrator for all the wonderful work that our administrators do throughout the year and beyond. One of them just asked me what they're going to get and I said, applause. And more work. So anyhow, so we are recommending that we recommend we use the Week of March 4 through 8 to recognize the Week of the School Administrator.
Anybody have any comments? All those in favor? It is so declared. And while we're doing that, Resolution 121211, recommend a motion, Resolution 121311 of the Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, declaring the week of March 11 through 15, 2013, as Adult Education Week be adopted.
So moved. Second.
So, so we're probably the only district that's celebrating Adult Education Week in, in the North Bay Area or further. We absolutely appreciate, and, and some of you have been to the graduation, that the program that adult education and all adult educators provide for the adults and near graduates in our district. And again, want to honor and celebrate the work that they do. And so, we are recommending that we do so.
Got a motion and a second? So, all those in favor? That is also declared.
Thank you.
Okay. Order of Business Services, item nine is the only hold item that I have. It's Resolution 121212. Resolution, that's recommend a motion, the Resolution 121212 of Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary District, authorizing competitive negotiation for wireless line and equipment procurement and implementation. Public Contract Code Section 20118.2, be adopted.
Second.
Somebody want to play that?
Sure. We're, we are going out to biz for wireless services for our two elementary school sites that would qualify for U rate benefits. Basically, we would get funds to offset the cost of that and make it somewhat affordable for us to have that installed at McKinley and McDowell.
Okay. Would those be the only two school sites that would have wireless?
At this time.
We have elements of wireless on many of our campuses. All of our campuses.
All of our campuses.
And these two campuses will be campus-wide with backbone to support wireless throughout the campus.
Okay. So, I guess my first one would be, is this student access or adult access wireless?
It would be both.
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 Okay. And we have all the appropriate policies, procedures?
Yeah. And we are continuously looking at our policies as we're looking at more of a bring-your-own-device type programs on campuses where people have their, from their cellphones to their iPads to their laptops available online.
Because there could be access to materials that could be issued.
And filters are part of, part of the system.
Okay.
Midge, are we trying to systematically phase it in so we have Wi-Fi on all our campuses? Because one of the things I'm hearing on site visits, it's one of the common requests of us, even everybody understands the budgetary constraints, but they, we've had some really good discussions with the principals about, we just want an effective Wi-Fi for the entire school, not pockets, not look for the perfect alignment of the stars and the satellites. Because, no, for, for, basically, they have great reasons. Not so much just kids being randomly able to link up. It's more like principals being able to communicate with teachers instantly, safety issues, basically, uniformity. So, I just wondered, do, do we have a way to slowly start implementing that within a reasonable timeframe, like before some of our principals, you know, die of old age? I'm looking at one of our youngest ones, so.
Right. So, Amy will still be here.
But I'm just saying, is this something we're going to be able to kind of do for all the campuses?
Well, I mean, this is a start. This is a start. And we are hoping that as finances allow and hopefully as the state budget gets better, you know, we could start to look at expanding that to all of our campuses. But this is a start and it is a goal. Because obviously, everything is working in that direction.
For, for the people looking home, the number I've heard, and I'm, I'm open to correction by you or Steve, was it would cost about a million dollars to do it for all our campuses. Is that high, low, close?
On this model, that's probably on the low side. To do it on all the campuses. We're looking for a model that we can do for under a million dollars at this point and haven't found one that would meet our needs.
So, hopefully, some of the guys at Gulfwood are listening and.
We're looking for sponsorship.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Okay. Did anybody want to talk about, I'm 10 or 11 informational only. Hearing nothing, I'm going to move on to. Public Report of Action Taken in Close Session Reportance for Government Code 549571. All those in favor? So, probably preaching to the choir here based upon who's left at this meeting, but obviously, we were given a set of facts and circumstances in closed session regarding student disciplinary items. There are two cases which were presented to us by Dave Rose and we will vote on those out in public session. Okay? So, I just want you to know, we're not just making this up. This is actually presented to us. Cases been presented to the board. That the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code, recommend a motion for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated condition. Students suspended expulsion status being in effect for the spring semester of 2013, 2012, 2013 school year and the fall semester of 13, 14 school year. Conditions above, subject to review with evidence of positive attainment and satisfactory behavior substance abuse counseling program and monthly screenings, community service and appropriate academic performance.
Second.
All those in favor? That's approved on a vote of five. In the second case, this is case number 23, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expelled by act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. Students suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2012, 2013 school year and the fall semester of the 13, 14 school year. Conditions above, subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service and appropriate academic performance.
Second.
All those in favor? That passes on a vote of five. All right. Future business calendar activities, next regular meeting is going to be February 26th, right here, 6:00 PM. And obviously, we'll have a closed session before that. And there's a whole bunch of upcoming events that I'm not going to read because they're very long. I have a question.
It's the 90 Days of May starting. We're starting to get the law of wisdom.
Shall I have a question? Just to make a clarification. It says, on the second item, 222 Board Meeting, time to be D. And then it says, our next regular meeting is the 26th. Okay. That's our special meeting?
One of the minutes.
Why didn't I? I just want to make sure we have a conflict. That's all I wondered, like, what are we doing?
Can we do a special meeting on the 5th of March?
Just shows we read it, Sue. That's all I want to hear.
Okay. And we've got, well, yeah, graduations already listed here. Okay. We'll be signing some papers of regular, routine nature. One of the, that'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor?